Order of the Torrington City Council, this is Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. Good evening and welcome to all. We have, as usual, Mr. Ryan Kaeth from K E R M, KG S Radio. This is being broadcast live on the local radio stations and also up on YouTube Live and will be of record on YouTube. We also have Ms. Jess Oakes here from the Torrington Telegram. Welcome to the press. This is Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. This is the 12th council meeting of the year, the second council meeting in June. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Rick Warren to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda are the mayor's informational items. We have all been blessed by the recent rains. I have heard reports of hail damage to crops around the area, but I don't think we've had any hail here in town. Last year's fire season was devastating to many in Wyoming and even in parts of Goshen County, but we hope and pray the recent rainfall will help mitigate a repeat of last year's fire season. Of course, the downside to wet weather is weed growth. There's a reason for the saying, "It grows like a weed." With this wet weather, I know the weed growth is tremendous. Thank you to all the residents working so hard to keep up with the weeds. I know our code enforcement officers are out and about, warning and even issuing citations for failing to manage the weeds. Again, thank you to all who are doing their best to keep up with the weeds, and I hope all will do their best to avoid contact with the code enforcement officers. Summer is here, school is out, and there is increased pedestrian, motorcycle, bicycle, and scooter traffic. Please exercise extra caution while driving. Please slow down while driving. As always, please do not use your cell phones while driving. A special shout out tonight to Ed Holly, Supervisor and Department Head of Streets and Sanitation, and the crew out at the landfill, Darrell Johnner, Donnie Kearns, and Rhonda Hawes, and frankly, all our employees doing the critical task of trash pickup and disposal. It was my great pleasure yesterday to receive an email. Mr. Harkins, our city Public Works Director forwarded this to me. It was an email from a gentleman named Timothy Reed. And for, so you know how important this email is, I'll tell you what his qualifications are. Tim Reed is the District One Supervisor, Solid Waste Permitting and Corrective Action Program, Solid and Hazardous Waste Division of the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. And I want to read this email that was sent directly to Mr. Ed Holly and to Darrell Johnner out at the landfill. "Good morning. I wanted to pass along that the I C program was very impressed with the landfill operations during their inspection on Friday, June 13th, 2025. You were commended for the professionalism with which you operate, the cleanliness and orderly nature of the operation and of the records, and the overall quality of the landfill. They even went so far as to say, 'You are the model with which other facilities should be gauged against for future inspections. I appreciate all of you and the tireless efforts to make sure you provide a quality operation for your community and the surrounding areas that you support.'" Again, that was signed by Tim Reed, District One Supervisor, Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality. So thanks again to those folks out there, Ed Holly, Darrell Johnner, Donnie Kearns, and Rhonda Hawes. "The City of Torrington has state-of-the-art trash pickup and disposal. This city service is critical to civilized life and supports the health, safety, and welfare of all our citizens. Again, a hearty thank you to all our sanitation department employees." We will get a more detailed report later from the Fire Chief Luis Correa and also Dennis Estes during the two-minute item on the agenda. But the State Fire Convention was held in Torrington last week, including the state competition. Overall, the City of Torrington was first place. Overall, the Torrington Rural was second place. So I want to point out that great showing by our local firefighters. Nice work, well done. Thank you all. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the June 3rd, 2025 council meeting as published.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the consent agenda as set forth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Is there any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved. My mistake, I forgot to mention that Councilman Dennis Kelly is not here tonight. He's excused, but we indeed have a quorum. So, I wanted to say that before we move on further. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the agenda itself is approved. Next item on the agenda is what we call the public forum. First, let me explain that. I know we have some takers this evening. This section of the agenda is for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. This is a time for the council to listen. No action will be taken. And I've lost track of the signup sheets.
I put them right here for you.
Okay. Councilman Victorin has them right next to me. Thank you, sir. All right. The first one up and is handed to me is Dennis Estes from the Torrington Fire Department. Thank you, Mr. Estes.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. This past weekend, we did hold the Wyoming State 92nd Annual Fire Convention here in Torrington. Haven't had a convention here in 17 years. It used to be pretty regular to run around here about eight to 10 years, depending on how many teams we had. But had a great convention. Cody Scotts was the president of our association this year and did a great job. Him and his team did a great job putting that on. We hosted 10 drill teams. I think we had maybe 150, 200 people down at the fire field all week. Had some barbecues, had interesting dinner Thursday night with some alligator and crawdads. Pretty interesting, it was good, yeah. It was kind of impressive to see the alligators curled up on the smoker and, yeah. So, something we don't get to see here very often. So, the top finishers in the top three places was, Afton City was third with a time of 143.89 seconds. That's five runs they do, and they have accumulated time that adds up to that. I think the state record might be about 121, right in there. The second place was again, the city rural, Torrington Rural team was a 129.17. So quite a bit apart from the third. And then the first-place team only beat them, 129 by 1.5, so two hundredths of a second. So, they're pretty competitive, so. Yeah, it all went pretty well, and I don't think we had any major problems. Everybody loved coming to Torrington. They always do for some reason, but they put on a good show.
Well, I appreciate that report, Mr. Estes, and again, congratulations to the City of Torrington team.
I will tell you, though, that out of that, there's like 18 trophies all in all. Torrington ended up with 10. We had two all-tournament members. One was Mike Schuler from the Electric Department. He was the tournament clamp all-tournament team. And then Albert Leir again, he's probably by far the oldest plug man, and if you've never opened his fire plug, he's very good at it, but he got an all-tournament team again, so.
Well, congratulations to both the Torrington City Department and the Torrington Rural.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We have a second signup sheet. It's Torrington Planning Commissioner David Kronk.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thanks for allowing me to speak. Have a few notes here, and the first one is note to self, don't stutter stupid. I do the best I can.
We're forgiving.
Thank you. So, I handed out a handout sheet. Hope you had time to look at it a little bit. Every mayor and council, mayor and council member took an oath of office, probably with their hand on a Bible, swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, Constitution of the State of Wyoming, and all the laws and ordinances of the City of Torrington. And I, apparently, sometimes this oath can be taken perhaps without reading all those statutes before you swear to uphold them. But at any rate, this planning commission that was adopted, there's a little bit of ambiguity there, but perhaps 1984, that seems like 41 years ago. I have a lot of people have asked, when was that adopted? There's also a January 15th of 1976, which is eight years previous to that, but it's pretty mature. It's been working really good. I've been on it for a lot of years. We, we've settled a lot of issues. We're, we're kind of part of the checks and balances, proactive checks and balances of city government. We can kind of hash things out with the public. We do our very best to present to the council the will of the public on these issues. And of course, we're only an advisory committee, and the city council has every right to override That being said, I, this document was, when you swore to uphold it, you swore to uphold it. You didn't swear to tinker with it, change it, neuter it, whatever it might say, but I, I went over the ordinance that's going to be read on the first reading tonight, and when, when will is scratched out and shall is overwritten and changed to the word may, that changes everything. We no longer have a, basically, it makes us ineffective. So, what was brought forth at the last go-around was that we can't find seats, people to fill the seats, but I digress. I don't think people know that the seats are open. I've heard about cost of advertising, but I listened to Mayor Dobie on the radio, that could be announced that way. I don't think those seats are hard to fill. When we had a fully seated planning commission, we never had a problem getting a quorum. But I think I'll leave it with that, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kronk.
You're welcome.
And you've got those? Okay. All right. We are now on the action items. The first action item is swimming pool boiler. Dennis Estes will provide an update on the swimming pool boiler and discuss options for repair slash replacement. So, call on Mr. Dennis Estes.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. Most of you know, but I'm going to update for the public what we've done at that pool. Most everybody here in this room knows, especially you folks know. Last fall, when we shut this pool down, the surface of the pool was in major disrepair. People were cutting their feet on it. We were having issues with tiles that had been chipped for years that they'd been fixing. It just got to the point where our pool manager and I decided that we have to fix this pool. So this winter, we went through the budget, and thanks to all the supervisors in the city, made some major cuts to their budget to fulfill this contract for this company to come in and totally take the plaster off the pool, take all the tile off of it, take all the gutter stones off that I don't think in my life, I've never been off in 53 years, and see what's going on underneath that gutter. That was all done. It was completely revamped. They did a bang-up job. They worked all winter. It was a mess. They ground those things and ground those things with those grinders, get that plaster off. It's a really nice, beautiful surface now. But we told everybody upfront that we're working on the surface. We're not working on the mechanical end of a 53-year-old pool. We continually work on this mechanical, mechanical end of this pool every year. This heater's been an issue for us for some time, and we've been piecing it together and piecing it together and piecing it together, and they may happen again this year. We're still working on it. We have had a vendor in, or a contractor in there since the day it opened. We cannot start that heater up till that pool's full. That pool was full like three or four days before we opened, or a week maybe, and we had some issues with the pool heater. Those folks come down, they got it running, there was some issue. It ran for a while, and it was heating up to 85 degrees, and then it quit. And so, we start working on it again. The day it quit was a Friday about two weeks ago. I called that vendor in Colorado. He dropped everything he had to get up here, and he was up here all day that Friday trying to work on it. Again, he ordered parts, thought he's on the phone with the maker, the owner, or the maker of the pool boiler, the large company, called their tech support, called his tech support, and they worked through it, and since then, they've got parts, got in here, and they can't get it fired again. They told me the other day, Wednesday, when they were here again, that they need to either replace the wiring harness and all the electronics, or we need to replace the boiler. The estimate on the replacement, they're still figuring it out, is upwards of $100,000. I'm not sure we have that. I'm not totally convinced that the boiler's completely out. So, I've been doing a lot of homework. I've been calling a lot of contractors in the front range of Colorado. Nobody wants to come up here that far. Through the help of Kelly Matlock, I found a gentleman in Scotts Bluff that's been working on the Scotts Bluff Pool Boiler. He's going to come up tomorrow. He owns a company in Scotts and Geary. He'll be up here tomorrow to look at it. I had Brandon Flanagan in there today on the phone with another gentleman in Casper that's supposed to be a guru with boilers. Seemed like he knew what he was doing. He cannot make it for two weeks. He's swamped. So hopefully, if this gentleman tomorrow can't get something going, and we can get through this without having to buy a new heater, which is what we're hoping, it's going to be two weeks before that other gentleman gets here. If we were to go ahead and replace this heater, and you get the money somewhere, it's going to be at least eight or nine weeks for it to get here, and realistically, that's summertime. It's done. We don't have, we won't have a heater for the pool. There's been a lot of misinformation going around about what's going on with this pool. I want everybody in the public to know that we're doing our dang-das to get it going. We've had people in here, we spent, through the city budgets and through donations from local companies in Torrington, the Rotary Club, Wyoming Community Gas, the Wyoming Healthcare folks, they spent $365,000 this winter redoing that pool. And the city supervisors, again, they gave up a lot in their budgets to get this done. I think we made a give up some chip steel for the streets. I gave up a lot in the parks and cemetery, and that's all that stuff out of the general fund that we have to have to operate. Then we had to replace all the concrete on the east pool deck that's been broken up for years. That was a budgeted item, and we kept it till the end to see if we got it going, got everything going, and we wouldn't need that money for something else. And luckily, at that time, everything was running, so Mark Weiss went ahead and hired a contractor, and they replaced all the concrete on the east pool deck. That was $10,000. The company that we're using is called P1 Service out of the front range of Colorado, and they're very, got a very good reputation. They do a lot of work in the front range. They're struggling with it, and we've spent so far $14,000 trying to get this heater going. So that's where we're at. I don't know what else to tell you folks, but I wish the public would understand, we would love nothing more than to have that heater working. But it's a 50, that, the heater's 20 years old. We put it in in 2006. It runs for three months, and then it shuts down. And anytime you shut anything down for six, eight months a year, I don't care if it's a car or anything, and you try to fire it back up, you're going to have some issues. So, I don't know where we're at with it, but we're going to try to get these two guys in here in the next week or so, see if we got any, any progress on it. If not, I could see a new heater down the road. I'd stand for any questions.
I, I don't necessarily have any questions, Mr. Mayor, but I've been at the pool with Dennis a few times since the, since the opening of the pool and the heater going out, and I share the public's frustration. I share the staff's frustration. I too would like to utilize the pool for lap swimming. So I understand, for the swim team and the water aerobics folks, it's frustrating. I mentioned to a constituent over social media last week that the city needs two things, more money and more time to fix this issue. And this issue, or those two things rather, are something we never have enough of. So I'm hopeful, based upon what Dennis has presented and talking with him today, that we will get a fix, one way or the other, hopefully sooner rather than later. But I do want the public to know that we hear, we hear the frustrations, we hear the concerns. We want it fixed, just like you want it fixed. We, we're just having a difficult time, as you can imagine, with a 50-year-old pool and a 20-year-old heater. I encounter this type of frustration in my daily, daily line of work. It's hard to find quality parts. It's hard, it's hard to find quality vendors to provide service. You know, we're not really, for all intents and purposes, we're really not in pool country. So pool vendors that provide service like this aren't, aren't easy to come by. But again, I just want the public to know, from the governing body standpoint, and I think also from the mayor's office, his standpoint, we're, we want nothing but the pool to be heated. We want nothing but kids to enjoy their time at it this summer. We want nothing but, but the swim team to continue practicing and competing. We want nothing but exercise to be happening. We want the pool to be utilized. If we didn't want the pool to be utilized, we wouldn't have sank almost $400,000 into it. But we want that asset for this community, and, and we're committed to seeing that it, its life continues to be expended over time.
I appreciate that, Mr. Victorin. That was very well said, and Dennis, that was very well said. If anybody's, I know folks that use the pool are frustrated, and I assure you that staff is frustrated, council is frustrated. I agree with what Mr. Victorin said. This town needs a swimming pool. We were blessed this winter. This was kind of a risk that we took with this contractor out of Golden, Colorado. He came in here, and he sure sounded like he knew what he was doing. He was available. He dropped everything and came up here a couple of times to meet with us. He promised us great things over the winter, and he delivered on those great things. So we took a risk on that because this council thinks that this pool is critical to this community. It's critical to the older folks, for the lap swimming. It's critical to the swim team. It's critical to the kids. So they have something to do in the summer, you know? I talked to law enforcement. The last thing they want is people not having a pool to enjoy. People, I mean younger people, because they will be out causing trouble if they don't keep busy doing something. That pool gets a lot of use. So I do want to follow up with Councilman Victorin and Dennis here. We are doing everything we can. If I had my way, you know, some great benefactor would walk in here and say, "Here's $100,000. would walk in here and say, "Here's $100,000. Go buy something." But we don't have that yet, okay? And even if we did, as you said, if we're a brand-new boiler, it would probably be six to eight weeks out, which is the end of the season. So, keep hoping and praying, frankly, that we can get a fix on this. I appreciate when we had the staff meeting with Dennis this morning. He followed up and went to Scotts Bluff, and apparently, that guy lives in Gearing. I know he spoke to Councilman Viktrin this afternoon about the gentleman in Casper, who both of you described to me as a pool boiler or a boiler guru. And sometimes, it just takes a particular person to see a particular piece of equipment and go, "This is what this needs." That's just the nature of equipment. Not everything's standardized. Some people can just look at stuff and go, "I've either had experience with this, or I just know, almost by intuition, what needs to be done on this." So, we're doing everything we can to get that pool heated, so.
I also want to thank Brandon Flanagan. I've called him twice in the last two weeks. He's dropped everything and come right over. I mean, within five minutes, the one contractor that was here last week was kind of laughing at me, like, "You can get an electrician that fast? How do you do that?"
Well, I think that indicates to all who are listening the value of that pool and how the whole community wants that boiler up and operating and working. We, you know, in a way, we took, as I said, we took a big risk sinking almost $400,000 into rehabilitating that pool. A lot of people thought that was kind of nuts, but we need that pool. Now, we were hoping against hope that that boiler would give us another year, at least, but it didn't. So, we're here where we are, and I thank both of you and all the staff for letting everybody know we're doing everything within our power to address the problem. So, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do you have any more, anybody got any questions for Mr. Estes? All right.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I noticed the swim team folks are out there, and I know the pool manager is out there. We're doing what we can, folks. We truly are. And we're disappointed for you. We, you know, had great hopes and great expectations about that rehabilitation project. It's sound and good. I was frankly shocked because I kept hearing horror stories. That's a 54-year-old pool. Who knows what's underneath there? And when that contractor from Golden came up here, he found that thing is foundationally and functionally sound. It needs these repairs. You know, there's talk about a wellness center and an indoor pool and all that. That's years out, folks. And this is what we have. When I was a kid, there was no city pool. It was privately owned down at the Travelers Trailer Court, and then there was a gym swim privately owned for a time. That wasn't until, I think, '71 or '72 where the city got a city pool. Now, most people don't remember that. Some of us in here do. But it hasn't been forever that the city provided a swimming pool. Now, for most people's lifetimes here, it's been all your life, but we're doing what we can, okay? And I don't want to give us excuses. I want to give us explanations. We're dealing with the budget tonight. We have two big problems in putting together a budget this year. That's inflation, which you've all experienced. When they shut down the country for COVID, yes, when you send everybody home to work and dump money into the system, you're going to have inflation, and it takes years to work itself out of the system. But we have that that we have to contend with, and frankly, we have reduced revenues. Not so much here as other places, but we do have reduced revenues, and we have that inflation issue to deal with, too. So, just appreciate the conversation here. That's where we're at on this boiler, at the pool, so.
Yeah, I just want to say it's a tough decision for the city council, something that is used for part of the year. And to put this kind of money into that, but to do it for the people of the community is an important thing. You're right. I'm old enough that I learned to swim from Dale Jones by going after heels and quarters at Travelers Court, and that's how he taught us to swim.
Across the River Bridge.
But it's an important thing for the summertime, and it's important to have as a recreational facility. So, we made the decision to put that money into it, and now here we are in this situation, and Murphy's Law strikes again.
All right. Well, that's our best explanation, and it probably doesn't sound good, but that's the truth of the matter. And again, we're doing everything we can, and we all still hold out hope that we will get that addressed this year as soon as possible and get that boiler up and running, make it through the season. So, all right. Thank you, folks. What we'll do now is we will leave regular session and go into public hearing. We are going to address the 2026 fiscal year budget. So, I would first call on Lynette Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I want to thank the staff and the Mayor and Council. We had several work sessions, and we've worked really hard to get where we are. And I appreciate all of the sacrifices that the department heads had to make and to make this budget balance this year. We did have some challenges, as you said. I won't repeat those, but it was challenging, as it is every year. But I just kind of wanted to go over some highlights with you. So, we also are dealing a little bit with supply chain issues, but it has improved. We are still waiting on one bucket truck for the electric department that I was hoping would be here before the end of the fiscal year, but it doesn't look like it's going to be. So, we'll be seeing that, hopefully, in the next couple of months. Last year, we had a real challenge with property and liability insurance. This year, it went significantly better. We had several quotes to look at, and I don't think the council is aware of this, but we ended up getting a better offer from Hub or after we told them we would be switching. So, Travelers agreed to separate the liability and the property and casualty. So, we will go back to LGLP for our liability, like we talked about, but we will be staying with Travelers for the property and casualty insurance. They did come down with their quote significantly, and we felt like we got the best of both worlds there. So, we're going to go with that. So, but it is a 19% decrease in premiums this year over last year, which is significant.
And that's just for Travelers, right?
Yes. Yes. So, we had two main goals in '26, and that was to maintain our reserve levels for 90 days of operating. So, we like to keep 90 days of operating expense on hand for emergency purposes. And then, we also want to maintain a qualified and strong workforce. So, we'll be talking about that as we go through the highlights. So, our highlights tonight are, we do have a significant increase in the budget this year, 29.53% or $12 million increase this year compared to '25. And the majority of this issue is due to capital construction projects. We have several large projects that are just beginning or will be beginning in fiscal year '26. So, I'll go over those here in just a minute. The total operating budget, which does not include capital, went up $1,165,000 or 4.78% compared to fiscal year '25. This increase is up from last year, and it is attributed mostly to inflation, but our wholesale power cost is the big, at least half of that. So, I wanted to bring that up. And then, so, our wholesale power increased in April of this year 9.3%. This resulted in an increase in the fiscal year '26 budget, $427,118 is what I've estimated. So, our vehicle and equipment budget actually decreased this year by about $61,000. The major equipment purchases this year include two mowers, a backhoe, mini excavator, a skid steer loader, a bucket truck, one-ton pickup, and then two used patrol cars. The capital projects that I mentioned earlier for $12.2 million are increased by $12.2 million. So, last year, it was $14.6 million, and this year, it's $26.8 millions for capital projects. A few of the major capital projects include the East D Street Water and Storm Sewer Project, which is just beginning. You notice the construction right across from Maverick.
Can I stop you there for a moment?
Yeah.
My understanding of this East D project is it's been on the books since 2009.
Yes.
It's finally going to be done.
We actually had the design sitting on the shelf, waiting for funding, so.
And my memory of this town, and it's long, and Wayne's is even longer, East D, those houses came in there right after World War II. So, that infrastructure down there, that water line, sewer line, sidewalk, curb, gutter, is, how many years ago was that?
My house was built in 1954 in that part of town, so.
Okay. So, it's time.
51 years.
And I think Jeff has explained that water line started out as an eight-inch line, maybe?
Four inches.
Four inches, and now it's down to two-inch, maybe?
Maybe.
Okay. So, it's time to be replaced in that neighborhood. And that project's going to run from the highway down by Maverick all the way up to 30th Avenue, which is one of the major, you know, just by observation, I think East D might be the busiest street in town. Seems to me it's busier than even West C. So, just wanted to add that about that East D project.
Yeah. It's a really important project, and, you know, we thought about doing it in phases, but we decided just to go after the funding and try to get it all done, because it is a major, major street throwaway, and it's got a major water line running down it. So, that is totaling $6.5 million in the fiscal year '26 budget. We also have, and that is mainly funded by loans. So, and the next project is a sewer manhole lining project, and we have a CDBG grant for this project, which will be beginning this year, and that's for about $1 million. We have a water line replacement project that will begin this year sometime, and we're expecting to expend $2.2 million this year in that water line replacement project. We also have a wastewater treatment improvement that has been in progress this year, and the remaining portion of that will be $8.4 million. That project's been long overdue as well. The airport will have two large projects, a new FBO building and a taxiway C improvement.
Can I stop you there just for a minute? FBO, Forward Base of Operation, synonymous word is a terminal, right? Okay. All right. Sorry. Go ahead.
Sure.
If I could.
Go ahead. You're on the airport board.
Fixed base operator or fixed base of operations, and it's where the airport operates out of, basically.
Yeah.
And mostly where general aviation can fuel and pilots can, they can do all sorts of things, get weather reports and navigation, all that, so.
And it seems like that current building is a 1954 model or thereabouts?
At least.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, the public should know that a lot of the funding for this is FAA and YDOT provided.
Yeah. The match on this funding is very low for us, so.
It's a heck of a deal for the city.
It is. It really is.
Because FFA pays 90%, and this YDOT pays half of the 10, and the city pays half of the 10, and sometimes less than half of the 10. So, it is a great deal for the city.
It is. So, those are major projects coming in this next year. We're going to be very busy. The general fund, its total budget increased by $1.89 million or 19% compared to fiscal year '25. The operating costs in the general fund decreased by $69,000, while capital improvements increased $1.7 million. So, some capital improvements in the general fund include, there's going to be an addition to the museum for the James Kelly Collection, and that is funded by a bequest or received to the Homesteaders Museum. So, that project will be underway this year. The street portion is actually coded to the general fund at $1.9 million of the East D project. And then, we have a new cooling tower for this complex, which was put in in 2010. So, it's already 15 years old and is needing replaced for $95,000. So, we will need to look at utility rates again this year. We'll do that this fall, and we'll also analyze if we need to make any adjustments there. We hope to do a cost-of-service study in the electric fund. This has been carried over a couple of years, and hopefully, I can get to it this year. There's a lot that goes into this, including applications to the Public Services Commission. So, we can talk about personnel costs. Like I said, one of our goals was to keep qualified people here. We know how expensive it is to keep people and how expensive turnover is. So, the city personnel costs increased $348,000 or 3.7% this year, which is very low. We will have a 2% COLA, which is a half a percent lower than last year. And we also will have merit increases, which will be half of what they were last year.
May I stop you again? So, we're looking at a 2% COLA. That's for everybody, citywide employees. What was the state of Wyoming telling us that the inflation rate for this year in this area?
So, our region, the inflation rate was a little over 4%.
So, it's not keeping up with what the state reports is the inflation rate in this area?
Right. So, this increase is about $98,664 less than last year's increase. So, and also, health insurance costs increased 3.7%. Our health insurance fund is doing good, but medical costs and medical inflation is out there, and we are a self-funded plan. So, we need to keep up with the inflation rates and make sure we have that in our reserve to pay claims. So, 3.7% increase there, and also, we had a partial increase because of some retirees that will be retiring this year. So, we'll look at the increases again in December when our plan renews, our health plan. And so, we'll go out and look for our stop-loss carrier and reassess the whole plan again with the Health Insurance Committee. So, talking about our cash balances, so the total cash balances for all funds for the fiscal year are estimated to be about $10.2 million. The funds falling short of their target cash reserves, which we all know about, are the airport fund, the golf fund, the swimming pool fund, the ambulance fund, and the cemetery fund. These funds don't bring in enough money to pay for the services they provide. And we had to use about $4.5 million from our cash carryover to balance the budget this year. So, in summary, you know, we have planned a lot of capital spending in fiscal year '26. We have aging infrastructure, which is a major concern in Torrington, as it is for most every municipality. And the majority of our infrastructure projects are either funded by grants or low-interest loans. The water and sewer loans- The water and sewer loans are coming in at 1% and 1.5%, which is really good considering what interest rates are right now. So it, it does kind of incentivize us to use that money to, to go ahead and get these infrastructure proj, projects in the ground or, or done. And we also are facing some reduction in property tax revenue this year. It ended up being not quite what I had thought. I did get the final numbers, well, not final, they're not certified yet, but the final estimate from her, which was.
When you say her?
I'm sorry, the assessor. She gives me the assessed value every year so that I can base what we're gonna bring in for property tax. So we ended up with about a 15% reduction in property tax that, so it's a little bit less than I had projected. But it is still a reduction. And I know, as a council, we talked about trying to make sure all the essential services remain the same, and we don't increase rev, revenue, or increase fees to the point that people can't afford them. So there's two fees that we, we talked about in our budget work sessions that we're looking at increasing, and one of them are contractors' licenses, and the other one is dispatch fees. So we'll be looking at those this year. So I project that the sales tax is gonna remain strong this year and steady. I don't really project a huge increase, but I'm hoping it stays steady, as well as some other tax revenue from fuel tax, severance, mineral royalties. So we'll, we'll also be facing some, I've estimated there's about 20 employees that are eligible for retirement in the next five years. So we need to do some succession planning. We need to probably put that at the top of our list. These employees have a lot of knowledge. And they, they have, I mean, the institutional knowledge they have is tremendous. A lot of them have been here for a lengthy amount of time. And we need to make sure that we can still provide the services safely and efficiently in the future. So I believe that, that in the end, you know, we, we have, we are in good fiscal health. We have a healthy three-month operating reserve, and hopefully we can mitigate any, any uncertainties that we may face this year. It seems like there's always something, but that's what I got to present to you today. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
One question that I have, Mrs. Strecker, is reserves. What we really, our goal is to have three months' expenses held in reserve, right?
Three months of operating expenses, yes. That is the minimum amount that, that really is required.
Just for good fiscal practice?
Yes, yes.
Auditors and?
Yeah, the auditor, I mean, they audit our books, but, but for financial health, if we're looking at going out for bonding or any type of loans, we wanna make sure we have that reserve there. And it's just, just a good practice so that we can plan for some of these projects that are coming.
And, and I wanted to ask you about that because some people look at things and go, well, heck, you've got $10 million in reserve. Why, what's the problem? Well, you need to keep the reserve for all the reasons that you just explained.
Our budget's $53 million. You know, our assets are, you know, twice that. So we have a lot of assets out there between electric, water, sewer, garbage, airport, cemetery, ambulance, police, fire department. I mean, just think about all those assets. $10 million is not that much.
All right. As, as with most families, it's good to have a savings somewhere else, so.
And as you say, if you go out looking for grants and loans, they wanna see how fiscally sound you are.
Yes, mhm. I also like to keep and make sure that if we do have debt, we do have those payments in reserve, so.
I have a couple, couple questions, Mr. Mayor, if I could. So I wanna go back to the property taxes.
Sure.
And the discrepancy between the assessor's first estimate and now. Was there much of an explanation given from her?
There wasn't. But I was glad to see the number. Hopefully, you know, I, I don't know if there, if the legislature's done with the, the tax cuts, but we are actually pretty lucky compared to some entities in what they've lost. So, you know, it could be worse. But it did affect our budget process, I have to say.
The other, the other thing I wanna bring up is since we have the topic of the pool, I should've asked for this probably earlier on, but it's a good, good juxtaposition for our conversation right now. And I wondered if, Ms. Strecker, if you could go over the pool's estimate for this budget, our estimated revenue and expenditures for this upcoming fiscal year. And hopefully, that can highlight the governing body's commitment to that facility. And that, how that commitment parallels itself with what the pool actually brings in for revenue.
Right. So in, in fiscal year 24, we actually, this isn't budget, we actually brought in 44,000 at the gate. So that's what I budgeted this year, is what we actually, 44,000. I don't know if we'll get there or not. You know, with the boiler being down, maybe, you know, attendance won't be up, but I'm hoping the temperatures will rise, and hopefully the, I mean, the outside temperature, and maybe the, the water temperature will rise too, that it, it's more refreshing, I guess. But hopefully, we can get the boiler fixed, too. I don't know. But the expenses we have, so personnel, we have 101,000 budgeted for personnel. And we're bringing in 44,000. For other operating expense, we have 230, or 137,000. So the total expected expenditures are 238,394. And that's without bringing a repair budget in for the, the boiler. I do not have that in the budget. So if we decide that we need a new boiler, we're gonna have to probably have a work session and see if we can figure out how we wanna fund it. So it, it's, right now, projected to be a negative 189,894. 189,000, almost 190,000. And that comes from the general fund, which, you know, is taxes and fees and, so.
And, and I just wanna add this. I know, I don't know, several council meetings ago, each year we review in the spring what we're gonna charge for swimming over there. And I know when we had that meeting, we don't wanna increase it much because we don't wanna put people out of the market. You know, especially families with kids and the swim lessons and all of those things. So we don't raise them much, that's what you're saying. The reason we only have $44,000 worth of revenue last year is 'cause we don't, council has decided that the fees are gonna be as low as they are, frankly. I mean, it may not feel low to a family of five, but it's not covering our expenses either, so. And I, you had something else?
Just, just wanted to preface that, that, you know, I hope, I hope the general public understands we're committed to the operation of the pool. We, we believe that it, it's necessary. And, and along that same vein, we don't make, you know, it doesn't bring in a fraction of what we need to, to operate it with, you know, somewhat, anyway. But costs 240,000 to operate, we earn less than 50,000. But we wanna see it open, we wanna see kids swimming, so. We're committed to it.
I almost consider it more like a public service than a, you know, really an enterprise fund. I mean, we charge a little bit, but really, it's there just for the people.
And this is the same way with our other funds that, that don't meet the mark, if you will. But the community needs them. The ambu, they need the ambulance, they need the cemetery, they, they need the airport, they need the pool.
Golf. Golf brings in a lot of people here, too.
One last thing on that. And we're not a private business, you know? If we were, we could charge whatever the market would bear, okay? We kinda try to keep that in mind when we set rates, but it's, we don't, because it is a public service, in a sense. You know, and at some point in past history, the city fathers thought that, and a thing that the city does is not just provide water and sewer and garbage and police and fire, but it provides some sort of recreational opportunities. And that's why we have the parks and the sports fields and the, the golf course and the swimming pool. I'm sure I left something out. Because that's become expected by the public that this municipality provides those things, so. And I'm not, and we support them. So it's just a history lesson. It didn't used to be that way. But over the years, it's become that way, so. All right, Nick. Well, Mrs. Strecker, I just wanna thank you. I know we had a lot of work sessions, budget work sessions, starting, I don't even remember when, March, maybe? If not earlier, all throughout the spring, where we're working on this budget. It's a big budget, it takes a lot of work. It takes sacrifice. We had department heads coming in and, and sacrificing for the pool and sacrificing for other things. Personnel. This is a truly amazing city in the sense that, that, you know, I worked here 50 years ago for a couple of summers. It kinda was run by duct tape and baling wire. It was different that, back then, there wasn't the EPA and OSHA and all those things, okay? Now there is. And we weren't able to get grant money in those days or money from the state, things like that. It actually came out of somebody's back pocket in the area, and the people couldn't afford taxes, so we didn't have much. And that's evolved over the last 50 years or so to where we are now. People would be shocked by how little what they pay in taxes goes to pay for all this stuff that we have. And I'm not trying to make anybody feel guilty. It just doesn't. If it weren't for grants, loans, and the severance tax, and all the things that we're able to get through the state and through the federal government, we wouldn't have the stuff. Last thing on that. These city employees that we have are high-end employees. They are certified, they have to be certified. Any more for a CDL, and somebody will correct me, but it's six grand that you got outlay to get a CDL. And many of our positions have to have that. That water department is a very complex chemical operation that's governed by EPA and OSHA, and those guys gotta know what they're doing. The electrical department, the police department, much higher training in the police department than we once had. All those sorts of things cause us to want and want to keep qualified personnel. We have a good city staff, we have good city employees. And what this council, it's apparent to me, wants to do is keep that up so that people have the services that they've come accustom, become accustomed to and are used to. And I, like a broken record on this, the city of Torrington provides the services that give us a civilized life. You know, go elsewhere in this world, okay? You don't have this stuff. We have it, and we've decided as, as people, you know, self-governing people, that we want this stuff. So I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate all the city employees and the staff and all the hard work that's gone into this budget. All right, anybody have any further questions for Mrs. Strecker? Or comments? All right, we are in public hearing, so I will at this time open up for public comments. First four, anybody have public comments for the budget? All right, anybody have public comments against the budget? All right, going once, going twice. I will close the public comment section of this public hearing, and I will now close the public hearing. We will leave public hearing and return to regular session. We are now on item number three on the agenda, which is ordinance on third reading for the 2026 fiscal year budget. And I'd first ask City Attorney Mr. Eddington to please read that ordinance by title.
It's an ordinance providing for the appropriation of money by the city of Torrington, Wyoming to meet its general fund requirements and obligations, to meet its enterprise fund requirements and obligations for the 2026 fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, and fixing the sum to be raised by taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. And again, I would call on Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The ordinance, total appropriations for the city of Torrington will be 53,358,366. The sum of 338,882 will be raised by taxation. The general fund requirements are 11,814,544. The water for, fund requirements are 10,370,972. The sewer fund requirements are 14,022,803. The electric fund requirements are 9,235,820. The sanitation fund requirements are 2,813,039. And the other funds totaling 5,101,188.
All right, gentlemen, any questions for Clerk Treasurer Strecker? I think we covered a lot in the public meeting. Appreciate that. All right, we are on item number three, ordinance on third reading related to the 2026 fiscal year budget. I would entertain a motion on third reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the but ordinance on third reading of the 2026 fiscal year budget.
All right, thank you, Councilman Deal. I have a motion from Councilman Deal on item number three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number three, ordinance on third reading for the 2026 fiscal year budget. All in favor to approve it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that's approved. Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Strecker. All right, we are on item number four, special event permit. Amy Baumgartner with the Torrington Lions Club is requesting a special event permit for a Lions Club Festival of Sight to be held on July 19, 25, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Pioneer Park. The applicant is requesting that the special events permit be waived. And I would first call on Chief of Police Matt Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This has been a successful and safe event for several years now. The Lions Club brings in a fun crowd of folks to support site for folks who need it. Pretty limited impact from city resource standpoint. They're using the, essentially, Drill Pratt area, the South Fire Hall in Pioneer Park. This year, they are looking at bringing in a couple of campsites there near the bounce houses so that they have access to electricity and water. They are asking for a waiver of the special events permit fee and estimate of total cost to the city for the event would be about $215. Be happy to stand for any questions that you might have or anything else I can offer.
Chief Johnson, so they're asking, I mean, this is a, charity is a good word. This is a charitable event.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so they're asking for the waiver of the $200 special events fee plus the $215 in estimated city costs?
I think I'll let them speak to that.
Okay, okay.
But...
You're a wise man. Okay.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any questions for Chief Johnson? Okay. I see Tina out there. Are you the one that's going to come forward?
You're the one of us.
Is that Amy Baumgartner?
This is Amy, yes.
Well, you're both welcome to come up, too.
We got you.
So I've got Amy Baumgartner and Tina Gerrols.
Okay. So, yes, we asked to waive the special events permit fee. Everything else we will cover. So that's just the main thing that we want to waive is just the special permits.
Well, we do appreciate that, so. And my understanding is, you're asking council to waive the $200 special events permit fee. You've already paid the $40 application fee.
We did.
Everybody pays that. And you're willing to pay the $215. That's the estimated cost for city services for your event.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's clear. Gentlemen, look, we appreciate this. As the chief said, this has gone on for years. I don't know, Tina or Amy, when this started, but how long ago did this?
I want to say it's been, I'm thinking we're working on our 12th year.
Okay. Well, that's a long time, and I know I signed a waiver of liability for the bounce house.
We did.
You guys waived liability for the bounce house.
Yes.
So you're going to have a bounce house?
Yes. That's actually going to be water slides, so.
Oh, okay.
And last year, it went over really well. We had a ton of families there, and we had a great turnout. It was probably one of our best ones yet.
Okay. So you're shooting for same or better this year?
Yeah, we're gearing more towards the family. We've gotten rid of the Beer Garden and some of the other events. We're going to have Cornhole Tournament that Kiwanis is putting on. Is that right?
Yep. We're having other clubs help us.
And, yeah, we're having other clubs help us. And then we're planning on a three-on-three basketball tournament. I'm not...
We might have a car show. We don't know yet. That's kind of still in the works, but...
Hey, but you, this year, no Beer Garden, right?
No Beer Garden.
No Beer Garden.
It's more towards just family and little kids this year.
We just don't make the money on it either, honestly. So...
And that's a long event, but you have people coming and leaving and coming and...
Oh, yes. All day long. I think they were busy all day at the concession stands.
We're looking, we're looking at hopefully close to 100 vendors. I don't know if we'll get that many, but we usually, and we have concessions, and we do a phenomenal amount of hamburgers and hot dogs and baked beans. I mean, we're usually out by the time we're done, so.
And Tina, can you just explain, I know you have the elevator speech, about what the Lions Club does for site, S-I-G-H-T?
Yes, yes.
Just tell us that.
So, we are, we help all of, so individuals can apply through both eye clinics here in town. We help for lower-income people. We help them with getting their...
Eye exams.
Eye exams.
Eyeglasses.
Eyeglasses. We help with cataract surgery. We work with Rocky Mountain Eye Bank, and they do a lot of, they help us. They pay for part of it, and then we pay for part of it. So, we do a lot for the community, and I don't really think that anybody, there's a lot of people that don't know that. But the eye clinics do let any lower-income family or people, they have the applications there. They just send us the applications. And I think we pay up to $350 for either the eye exam or the glasses.
That's why I wanted you to be able to say that, because the more knowledge that's out there about what you guys actually do for site...
How many have we...
So this year alone, we've approved six applicants.
Yeah, so far, so.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. Do you still have the collection boxes for the used eyeglasses?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
And we added a new one at First American Title, so.
Yep. So we, we still do all that. And this year, we had our State Lions Convention here, too, in Torrington, and Mayor Dobie got to speak at it in the morning, and it was, was very appreciative of that. So, we brought in quite a few people here to the area.
Yeah, we weren't expecting that much.
Yeah.
I like that. You bring people that may not have a reason to come to Torrington, came here, and they...
Well, this is the first time I think we've had it in how many years? It's been like...
I think they said 20?
20 years? Yeah.
I think they said it's been a very long time.
Good for you guys.
So we're trying to, we're trying to get membership into our club, too. Like our Burns Club, they have like 44 members there, and over half of them are under the age of 21.
Wow.
So, we're trying to gear, yeah.
Where?
Burns, Wyoming.
Burns.
Yeah, yep. They do, they do a great job there. So, we're trying to increase...
Wonderful that you get the...
I think we're up to 13 members here. So, we're getting, we're working on it, but that's what we're really focusing on this year, too.
Good for you guys.
And Amy is actually, she is actually our first district governor. So, she will, next year, she will be the district governor for Lions Club.
Of Wyoming.
Of Wyoming, yes.
Congratulations.
So, that's been a big boost, too. So she gets to do some traveling. She gets to go to leader dog training in Minnesota.
Michigan.
Michigan. So, and then she gets to go to Hong Kong next year for Nationals.
I know. It's international, right?
Yeah. Yes, it is. Yep. So, yeah.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Tina or Amy? You guys present very well. I appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are on item number four, the special event for the event permit for the Lions Club. And it sounds like they are asking that the special event permit fee be waived, but they're willing to pay the $215 in estimated costs of the city for that event. I'd entertain a motion.
I would, I would move to approve the special event permit and so doing, waiving the permit fee and assessing the associated costs.
Of $215.
Of $215 to the applicant.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victorin, item number four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. The motion is to approve the special event permit, waive the $200 special event permit fee, and assess the $215 for associated city costs. All right. That's the motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the special event permit set forth in item four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that's approved with the fee waived and the assessment of $215 in city costs. Thank you, ladies. All right. We are on the second page of the agenda, item number five, special event permit. Tiffany Leslie with the Bronco Bar is requesting a special event permit for a street dance to be held on July 12, 25, from 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. The applicant is requesting approval to close the public street on Main Street between 19th Avenue and 20th Avenue as specified on the map submitted with the permit application. And I would again, first call on Chief, Chief of Police Matt Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is essentially the same events plan that we utilized last year for the same street dance. This has been, again, a successful and safe event for a number of years. The handful of things that would be of note, we're able to provide two police officers on an underage drinking enforcement grant that can patrol in and around the street dance. That would be at no additional cost to the city, or we wouldn't propose any carryover of that to Tiff Leslie at the Bronco. And then there would be approximately $203 in additional costs to the city for delivery of barricades, taking care of the trash, and a little bit of time for police officers to help set up and tear down barricades for traffic. I really don't have any concerns. They've done a great job managing this in the past, and they run a tight ship, and we'll be happy to support them. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Chief Johnson. Gentlemen, do you have any questions about this special event permit request from Chief Johnson?
What did, what was the cost total?
I believe $203. We had $38 for police officers, $105 for delivery and pickup of barricades and trash cans, and then 60 for the disposal of the trash.
And I think that adds up to $203.
But, that was my math, but it wasn't my major, so.
I see Councilman Deal agreeing that that's the total.
Yes, and I'm brilliant, of course.
It's nice to have somebody up my right that's brilliant. All right. So, Tiffany, would you come up, please? Thank you. Tiffany Leslie from the Bronco.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am completely willing to pay the $203 fees. Obviously, this is a profitable event. It's not nonprofit, so that's already in our overhead budget for the street dance. This year, we are having the Martian Manhunters as our band. They are local band right here from Torrington and Goshen County. Three of the members currently live in Torrington, and they just started playing around the area about six months ago. So that's a little different. They play classic rock and some country. I asked to have the street closed at 6:00 p.m. this year instead of 4:00 and 5:00, like I have in previous years, because we don't expect as much setup. So that way, we won't interfere with as much traffic. Pretty much like chief said, same deal, same setup. We'll have the stage on the south end of the street so that way, or the north end, I'm sorry, so that way it projects into the south, so residential area shouldn't hear as much noise as normal. And any complaints that residents have, chief and I have determined that he'll let me know, and we'll talk to the band and the sound guys and turn it down so that the residents, it doesn't affect them too much.
And this is on a Saturday, right?
It is. It is on a Saturday. And I decided to go a little bit earlier this year. Usually, we do it the last weekend in July, but I've noticed that Cheyenne Frontier Days, the larger they get and the bigger acts they have, a lot of our clientele go down there. So it's hard to compete with something that, you know, as large as Cheyenne Frontier Days. So we decided to try it a little bit earlier in the season, and hopefully we get a better turnout for everything.
What's the name of the band, the Martian Manhunters?
Martian Manhunters.
They must, are they familiar with Elon Musk?
I'm not sure, to be honest.
Isn't he going to colonize Mars or something?
Among other things.
Among other things.
I don't talk politics at a bar, but it's bad.
That's wise. That's wise. Okay. Well, it sounds good, and I know we've had good history with you. You do, as the chief says, run a tight ship, and I like the grant that we're able to do to provide police officers to check underage drinking, and you've been good about that and haven't had, I don't recall any complaints, really, from, from the past.
It's been a pretty event, and a lot of folks seem to enjoy it.
They do, and we appreciate you running a tight ship.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that from you.
That's what you're doing. You know what you're doing. All right. Gentlemen, any further questions for Tiffany Leslie? All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
We are on item number five, so I would entertain a motion to approve that special event permit, no waiver of the fee, and assess the costs of, estimated cost of $203.
I would make that motion.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the special event permit set forth in item five with no waiver of the special event fee and the willingness of Ms. Leslie to pay the $203 for city costs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. Item number five, all those in favor of approval of the special event permit, no waiver of the special event permit fee, and assess $203 for the city costs.
I have a...
All right. I think I restated it correctly. Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that special event permit is approved. The fee will be assessed, and the $203 will be assessed. Thank you, Ms. Leslie. All right. We are on item number six, excuse me, special event permit. Christine Guzman from Made It Clean is requesting a special event permit for the Hometown Hustle 5K to be held on August 9, 25, from 7:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The applicant is requesting that the special event permit fee be waived. And for the third time, I'd call on Chief of Police Matt Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Hometown Hustle 5K is really just kind of a community building fun run that's been proposed for August 9. What we're proposing is a route that we've used successfully before for a 5K run, and it really works out nicely with pretty solid runner safety and also limited traffic impact. So as you're able to see on the map, they'll start from the compound there on East Am, run out to, along the frontage road sidewalk, hit the overpass, run the overpass all the way to Main, turn around, and then come back. On the return route, they will jump onto East 17th, down to M, and then back to the compound. We're looking at a request for nine volunteers to take care of the runners and make sure we've got good visibility. Really, kind of the bigger concern area that we have is right there, just east of the overpass. There's a lot of entry and exit onto that frontage road right there. So we're just wanting to make sure we've got good visibility and make sure that folks are keeping an eye out for the runners. The big ask that I've made of them is that the two volunteers at the overpass intersections, the north and south, would be manned by first responders. I would like to have trained folks there because that's going to involve stopping traffic. Christine has assured me that they're able to do that, and really, I don't see this costing the city, there's no city expense involved. The only potential cost there would be if they are unable to provide volunteer first responders to cover those two spots. I would ask that that would be filled by police officers, and that would be approximately $50 an hour. But at this time, we don't anticipate that that's going to be an issue. The event parking will be there in the Sunrise Church parking lot. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
This, this route's been used by others before.
Yeah, we used it for the task force run last year, and it was very successful.
Because it's mostly on the sidewalk, very minimal street.
Hundred percent on the sidewalk, just two, I mean, the, the overpass crossings are really, excuse me, the overpass road intersection there with Main Street is really the only place that they're crossing traffic. And it's important to have folks there monitoring that and stopping traffic just because the runners aren't paying attention to that crossing, and the drivers may not expect them to make a quick entry. So we just want to make sure they're safe there. And other than that, it's pretty much 100% sidewalk with very limited, limited street crossings.
And I believe it's on a Saturday. Okay. All right. Ms. Guzman, do you want to come up? Thank you. We have Christine Guzman from Made It Clean.
Yes, ma'am. So, we're going to do the Hometown Hustle. Matt Richardson and I, he owns the compound gym. We wanted to do something that was healthy, fun, that we could build, you know, bring the community together. We are asking for the $200 be waived. This is something that we're going to plan on to do annually, to bring in the technology to time everyone. A bib is a little number that you get, right, when you run, and when you start and you finish, so that way you can track your time. That does cost a couple hundred dollars, so we're asking that it be waived for our first. But like I said, we want to continue to do this as an annual run.
Okay. And I like the route because it's been used successfully before, and I think it's probably the safest route we have in town. It's a good route because you get some uphill and some downhill with the overpass. The chief mentioned you have two volunteer first responders that are going to do traffic control for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you already have them lined up to do that?
Sure do.
Okay. Appreciate that, because then that's virtually no cost by the city on this. Okay. All right. And you're hoping this to be, is to be an annual thing?
Yes.
I think you called it a community building, morale building sort of thing?
Absolutely. Yes, fun, healthy, yes.
Okay. And who was it, you're doing... You're doing it, along with whom?
And Matt Richardson from the compound, so that's why we're starting and stopping at his location.
Okay. All right, thank you. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Ms. Guzman? All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All right, we are on item number six, special event permit for the Made It Clean 5K, and requesting that the special event permit fee be waived, and there are no associated city costs. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion to approve the special event permit and the waiving of the fee.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal to, in item number six, to approve the special event permit for the 5K and waive the special event permit fee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. Item number six, all those in favor of approving the special event permit and waiving the special event permit fee as set forth in item six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that is approved and permitted and waived the fee. Thank you, Ms. Guzman. All right, we are on item number seven, which is a motion to take the following item from the table, and just a brief reminder, on our June third council meeting, we had the ordinance on first reading relating to the Planning Commission, and after a substantial amount of discussion, I think Mr., or Councilman Deal made a very wise decision to move to table the motion. It was quickly seconded, I don't remember who, I don't even think we even had any discussion. So what we need to do is remove the item from the table. So, item number seven, I would entertain a motion to remove from the table the ordinance on first reading relating to the Planning Commission.
So I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal, item number seven, to remove from the table the ordinance relating to the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of removing from the table the ordinance on first reading relating to Planning Commissions, Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, that motion passes, that item is removed from the table, which allows us to move on to item number eight, which is ordinance on first reading, and I'd ask Mr. Eddington to please read the ordinance by title.
It's an ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 2.20, the Torrington Municipal Code 2025 revisions relating to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. All right, Dennis Estes still here? You want to come up? Call on you, Mr. Estes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last plan, at the last council meeting, they did decide to table it and suggested some changes. Councilman Victorin suggested that we move the membership around, and I think Mr. Eddington did that in two twenty twenty B. Other than that, there was, on D, there were some changes to how long they'll serve, and really, other than that, it's just typos that we fixed, and everything else pretty much stayed the same, with the exception of K. All committee member's signature shall be required. No committee member's signature shall be required on any plot ordinance plan or any other official document of the city of Torrington. And I would stand for any questions.
All right, but before, because we'll have some for you, but before you did that, all that big discussion we had before it got tabled last, on June third, all those suggestions by council have been placed in this current ordinance on first reading, right?
As near as I can tell, Attorney Eddington probably could tell you that for sure. It's been going around myself, Mr. Eddington, and the city engineer.
Mr. Eddington, I believe that's the case.
That is certainly my intent. I believe Mr. Estes' changes are in yellow, and mine are in blue, and, but we tried to follow every note and direction that we received from the council last meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eddington. All right, you're going to ask the basic question, this Planning Commission ordinance has not been visited by the city council since eighty-four, is that about right?
That sounds about right. I think Mr. Crock was correct, but I do know in eighty-two, I have a document in my office where there was a big Planning Commission that rezoned the whole town, took it out of the districts and put it into the rezoning, and it's the current zoning we're at, and I believe after that, the Planning Commission was probably reappointed, those guys were probably wore out, that was a big, big job to rezon the whole town.
So that happened in eighty-two, and then sort of fresh start in eighty-four?
I believe so. I was barely out of high school, so I don't even know.
Only forty-one years ago. All right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Estes? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Estes, and I would just remind everybody that by law, ordinances have to have three readings, first, a second, and a third, and that is sort of the due process and the legislative process that develops. Substantial amount, if you were here for the meeting last time, was done, and then the motion to table was passed, and we made all the fixes, and I think they're all there, to my memory, that council suggested Mr. Eddington make, and that council suggested that Mr. Estes make, so I think they're all in there. One of the main things I want to say is that under state law and city ordinance on zoning issues and those sorts of issues, this council, when it's in session, will leave regular session and enter, I'm not sure the exact word, but will become the Board of Adjustment for certain issues. And we have final say as council on zoning and conditional use permits and those sorts of things. There was an expression of interest and intent on this council that I observed last time we met on June third. They want to continue a planning commission, they like the planning commission serving in an advisory capacity, and it's useful. Council considers it a useful commission to have, even though, you know, the final authorities in the board, it's council sitting as a Board of Adjustment. They can say yea or nay to it, but it is an advisory capacity thing, this commission, so. What it looks like we're doing is updating it, changing some of the, what looked like mandatory language, you know, in the law, what shall and will are mandatory, Mr. Eddington can confirm, can confirm that, and may is discretionary, and, and so I thought that was appropriate. I know Councilman Victorin suggested we go down to five members. I know that historically, since this building's been built, the Planning Commission meets here, there's five chairs up here. That's very kind of petty, but it works, okay? You're not looking for extra seats, okay? Quorum would be three people, with a commission of five, so that's in here. If this passes the third readings, then I would anticipate appointing four city residents for the board, and, under the new ordinance, and one county resident, and that, those appointments would be placed on an agenda for the council, who would have the right to approve the appointments that I make, so that's what I would envision if this makes first, second, and third reading, so. Any questions from council, comments?
My, my comments are just a few. I'm going to repeat that I, as I stated last time, I think all of the issues that were presented to us on the original first reading, if you will, I, I think all those could be satisfied if we had the full board seated. It's my opinion, I think we need to give them a task, the, the Planning Commission, the members of the Planning Commission, give them a duty, a job to do, and with the caveat of that, there are people that want to do that job, and I think everything else will fall into place. I like some things about the new ordinance, I don't think we, that's my personal opinion, some will probably disagree, I don't think it needs to be, is it seven? Is it currently seven members?
Yes, and there are four currently on there.
You know, the, the, the ultimate governing body of the city is five, four plus the mayor. I personally like that, I can see it from both angles. I'm, I'm just of the opinion that, that we need to give them a task, and if we, if we take out, or we substitute the words will with may, it won't give them much of a job, per se. But that's my, that's my opinion.
Well, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Councilman Deal?
Mr. Mayor, I, I understand that, too, and it certainly would not be my intent or concern to do away with the planning council and make it some sort of pro forma thing, that indeed, they should have a task, and that task is to advise city council and the board, acting as the Board of Adjustment.
I, I don't like some of the wording of what's, what's in here, that's my only.
What, can you be?
I don't like the, the, from the will to may, that's my only thing, that's kind of, I hate to say it ambiguous, kind of isn't hardened to the point.
All right, so you're with Councilman Victorin on the, don't want to change the wills to mays. I, I see problems with not changing them. If I look at this list of responsibilities, okay, and you put wills in there, you guys will have a full time and then some job. If you put will in there, where all those mays are, committee will review and recommend to the council, blah, 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 and item B, item F, the committee will undertake a regular and continuing review of zoning ordinances, make such recommendations for changes to the council as it deems appropriate, so you've kind of got their, them out there, if it's will, kind of on their own, doing their own thing, and then coming to council with suggestions and stuff. The way it's currently working, I think Mr. Estes as building and zoning officer knows what is the best thing to bring before them, and can you come here and answer that?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor and Council, it's not my intention to do anything different than I'm doing now, anything that would come to me, that has come to me, I plan to continue down that same road unless I'm directed by this body to do something different. I don't want to take them out. My problem is, is when they don't meet, in the occasion they don't meet, whether they're seven, five, or it doesn't matter, it creates me a lot of issues down the road, and then it could, the people, the applicant could have to reapply and repay and have to readvertise, and it's in the ordinances that I have to advertise twice, and I have to, and send letters to everybody within a hundred and fifty feet of whatever's going on. So that's a cost that we really have to cover. That mailing is getting expensive, the advertising's getting expensive, so in the event that we didn't meet for some reason, and they don't sign a plat, it creates a lot of issues down the road. Alls I'm trying to do is give a little leeway, and, and then the other thing is some are may and some are will, so you really got to know these ordinances on what's coming up, oh, this one may, and this one will, and, but right now, I, I do, I, I use everything as will, I, I take everything to them, when it comes through. I treat everybody the same.
Just the practice that you do.
It's easy for me.
Because it's, the purpose of the commission is to run things by them, right? Let them have a shot at it, and then they will have a report or a yea or a nay on something, and then you bring it to us, and we either agree with them or we disagree with them, and I, I mean, I haven't been on council for very long, two and a half years, but I think we've never gone against what the Planning Commission has said. If we have, I don't recall it, and it is helpful. So it's, it's supposed to sit as an advisory board, because as again, under the law, the final, well, like it or not, us five elected people have the final say-so on these things, and so they're valuable, as I'm getting the impression from council, to sit in an advisory capacity. For instance, if I look at item F, and you don't have may but will, the committee will undertake a regular and continuing review of the zoning ordinances, make such recommendations for changes to the council as it deems appropriate, so you'd have a duty to do that, okay? If you change it from, if you leave it at will. Or G, the committee will review and recommend to the council, either after approval, disapproval, or modification of zoning ordinances, changes recommended by city staff. That's why I'm in favor of the may. For one thing, it just distinguishes between who has authority over these issues. The city council sitting as Board of Adjustment does. The planning commission, God bless them for their work, nobody says that their work's not valuable, but it's discretionary, okay? And they sit, and they have a public hearing, and they probably clear out some of the weeds and whatever needs to be done, and then they take a vote, and it comes to us as a yea or a nay, and then either way, we decide to go, when it's presented by the zoning officer, we will decide as council, that's kind of how I see it.
The other, the other issue in Torrington is, is Torrington's built, we're not going to see subdivisions coming in. Now, if we had subdivisions coming in all the time like the county, where you need somebody looking at that zoning, and if the streets are right, and the planning and all that stuff, we don't even have a master street plan, and I don't foresee the city growing much, any, in any direction, because we just can't build subdivisions. If that was the case, to where we're building, like when we built from, from East F over all the blowdorn additions, that Planning Commission was valuable, they need to know that.
Very busy.
And very busy. We just don't have that today. Right now, I'm taking five-minute meeting, ten-minute meetings to them.
Mr. Mayor, might I make a friendly amendment? Anytime you see the may, that is, the shall has been changed to may, item B, the committee reviews and recommends, item F, the committee undertakes, item G, the committee reviews and recommends, and in section two twenty oh sixty, Planning Commission prepares and recommends. That way, we aren't worried about may or shall, it is simply they are given this task.
Let me see if I understand that, so I'm going to.
Going to remove the, the shall and the may, and simply make those, instead of passive voice, to make those active voice, the committee reviews and recommends, and in F, the committee undertakes, and we're doing away with the may there, and in B and F, and in G, the committee reviews and recommends, and do away with the may, and then on the next page, at the direction of the governing body, the Planning Commission prepares and recommends to the city council, so on and so forth. So there is a sense of direction, but there's not a demand.
Mandatory.
Yes.
Mr. Eddington, what do you think about that? Did you?
Well.
Took me a while to grasp it, but I think I know what he's saying.
Yeah. I think it would work, but I just don't think it's the best. Shall is contradictory, shall or will is inconsistent with an advisory board, and that's why I believe may is appropriate and necessary, but we can delete those if that causes concern. Planning Commission as an advisory board has nothing to do unless this governing body gives them something to do, and so that is discretionary to begin with. It exists as a discretionary board, it originates as a discretionary board by city ordinance that I added and put in there. If you'll look at the first blue line pursuant to Torrington Municipal Code, ordinance two point four zero point zero one, all boards and committees created by the mayor with confirmation by the city council shall serve in an advisory capacity only. Having the term shall or will is inconsistent with that mission of any advisory board, not just the Planning Commission, any, any other board that you would have out there that's advisory in nature. So I will be the scribbler of any amendment. So I will be the scribbler of any amendment you want. I'm just recommending to you that "may" is more appropriate.
Councilman Deal?
Yes, and I agree with you, Mr. Eddington. However, as an English teacher for a long time and understanding the language, I think this provides, my suggestion provides a way to make it clear that there are duties which the governing board will assign to them, and then their task is to review and recommend.
I understand that you're an English professor. I'm a lawyer, so is he. And if we see, if this goes to a court, and this board is saying, they have delegated their authority to us, we have authority now, that presents a legal problem in my mind, because it has to be distinguished who has the real authority, which is council sitting as Board of Adjustment, and who has only advisory authority, which is the commission. That's how I see it. It's a legal distinction that I think has to be made. That's...
It'd be most appropriate to do it that way. All statutes do it that way, and the intent is, the ordinance is, all our ordinance should be that it's consistent that way.
And to give... Councilman Deal is due, right? You know, ever since I was in law school and probably for generations before, hey, you lawyers, quit using that clumsy language. Well, lawyers lose language, and they repeat it, and they say, I mean this, I mean this, and I really mean this, because you end up in litigation, and the other side, they don't really mean that. Well, I said three times that I mean it, okay? And that's how I see it, is it makes a, it keeps the big distinction, the big distinction that the law already makes about this is the mandatory, board of, sitting as Board of Adjustment, and the commission is a discretionary thing that advises, and we can take their advice or not take their advice. That's, I see the big difference.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as there is no second, I will allow my motion to die.
Okay. Again, it's good discussion, okay? All right. Dennis has already gone and sat down. Oh, he's over here. I just wanted to locate you. I know that you and I have, I understand where you're coming from, because I've sat with you with your concerns over it. Plats that Bob Taylor produces have that signature thing on it, right?
Correct.
And it says, you tell me what it says, because that does present a problem. If it hasn't gone to the Planning Commission, those plats read the way they do.
It says, it says that they met, and they're signing off on it. And when they don't meet, then I got to legally retake it back to it, because the county clerk will not record it.
Right.
What happens if there's currently a tie on the Planning Commission?
Well, my understanding of the rules is a tie is a no vote.
Yeah.
Got to have a majority.
So they would then refuse to sign the plat?
Could.
Then what happens?
Well, you get to go back through it again, legally.
Isn't the council the final authority?
They are.
Acting as Board of Adjustment?
But the plat literally reads that, tell them how the plat literally reads. You see it more than I do.
Well, it just says that they met on this date, and the chairman signs it, and they approved it on this date at this public meeting.
And then the mayor and the city clerk sign it. What I don't want is paranoia, okay? I don't want anybody to think that we're up to something, because we're not. This thing keeps the Planning Commission, okay? It clarifies what rights it has, which aren't much, it's discretionary, okay? And I think that distinction between "will" and "may" is critical, because of the relationship that council sitting as Board of Adjustment has to the Planning Commission. Doesn't say that we don't want to use it. It's got use, it's a useful thing, okay? But this clarifies that, and it hasn't been amended for 41 years, and times have changed, just as you said, we're kind of landlocked. I don't think anybody is looking here at big subdivisions happening anytime soon. And if that were to happen, I hope it does, right? Then this ordinance can be readdressed.
Well, it wouldn't need to, because it would go to the Planning Commission anyway.
Okay, there you go.
It's my intention, and I don't know what the next person's going to do down the road, but I don't know why you wouldn't.
Well, as you said, you serve kind of the guidance of me and the council about what we want you to do.
Right. Unless you directed us otherwise, I mean, which I don't see the whole body doing on some issue.
Right.
But...
So question?
Go ahead.
Question?
Go ahead.
This version of the ordinance in blue, Item K, under Section 22040, this is new language, right? This language doesn't appear in a current ordinance.
That is new.
How a committee member's signature "shall" is not required on any ordinance. Does it say anywhere or plat? Let's talk about plats, right?
It does, and that was intentionally added to circumvent the problem that we've had before, to eliminate their, the chairman, Planning Commission board saying they met and they signed off. So that's not a problem on the plats.
Does the plat require his signature?
We don't believe so. Bob Taylor believes it does, and that's why we're trying to eliminate that issue.
And help me understand the process. What is Bob's role?
County surveyor.
And so these plats that occur within the city's corporate limits go through him to the recording at the clerk's office?
Because we're still part of the county.
Sure.
Yep.
And there's a difference, there's a difference in the requirements for the county Planning Commission as the city Planning Commission. The county's required to have one. This one is subject to the council appointing.
The county Planning Commission is controlled by a whole different bunch of laws, statutes, and whatever else. It's different than the city.
Correct.
Does the county, designate him the county surveyor? Does he have legal authority to assert the city's signing of the plat, signing or non-signing of the plat?
Well, they do that. They've not allowed the recording of plats without that signature, which was impossible to obtain because the Planning Commission didn't meet. And then we have a blank on a Mylar plat of the Planning Commission, and that creates the issue.
And he is saying that he will not forward on any potential plat if there isn't a signature of the chair or designee of the Planning Commission, because our ordinance requires the signature?
His interpretation of it is that. Go ahead, Dennis.
And it's not just Bob, it's the county clerk. She gets that plat and sees a blank there, she's not going to record it.
The reason Benchmark gets involved in ours is because 99% of the time, they're doing the work on the plat. So then after, after we get all our done, we send it over to them, and then they take it to get recorded. So that's where everything goes.
Bob Taylor an attorney of law?
I don't believe so.
No.
Well, I don't want a lawsuit either.
But when it says "will" meet...
He's interpreting that as "shall."
Yeah.
I just want to say, I hear what Councilman Warren is saying, and I hear what Councilman Victorin is saying, and I heard what Councilman Deal is saying. I like this version of this ordinance on first reading. I think it's exactly what we need to carry on, okay? The Planning Commission's going to have plenty to do, because this council is going to want to, or me, is going to want to direct them to meet and do what they do, okay? But it shows that they're just in an advisory capacity to us sitting as Board of Adjustment. That's all I see happening here, and it clears up a substantial, real problem that Dennis has with this.
That's certainly the intent.
Right. And it eliminates some scenario where the citizen comes in, shells out his 300 bucks, something doesn't happen, not laying blame, just doesn't get done, and then we get to the point where the county clerk and recorder won't record it, and Bob won't, and then we're stuck with that old ordinance where Dennis, I'm sorry, dude, you're going to have to run this through again, that 300 bucks. Actually, we only have a motion pending, do we? Okay. Been a lot of good discussion, though. All right, I would entertain a motion. Item number eight, ordinance on first reading, I would entertain a motion to pass this ordinance on first reading relating to the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and I have a second from Councilman Warren. So...
Who made the motion?
Councilman Deal.
No, I didn't make a motion.
No, I didn't make a motion either.
I thought I had a motion. All right, you second it. Sorry, let me start over. Right. Item number eight, ordinance on first reading relating to Planning Commission. Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading?
Recognizing that there will be two more readings, I would make a motion to approve for purposes of discussion, if nothing else.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the ordinance on first reading relating to Planning Commission. Now, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Okay, gentlemen, we have the motion on first reading. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for vote. Item number eight, all those in favor of approving the ordinance on first reading relating to the Planning Commission signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Tie vote is...
Is that two?
Two, two, so it fails, right? Mr. Eddington?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Item number eight, ordinance on first reading relating to the Planning Commission fails. All right, we are on item number nine, agreement with City of Wheatland for disposal of municipal solid waste. Staff references, Jeff Harkins and Ed Holly, you're both here. Appreciate it. I'll call on Public Works Director Harkins first.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The agreement with Wheatland that's being proposed is going to increase the rate that Wheatland pays initially to six cents per pound. They currently pay five cents per pound. And in addition to that, it will include an annual 3% inflationary adjustment factor that'll take place every January 1st. Wheatland basically brings in, on average, about 6,103,000 pounds of trash to the City of Torrington landfill. At the current five cents a pound, that rate comes out to be about $305,000 a year. At the new rate, that would raise to $366,192 per year, or an increase of about $61,032. Within 3% inflationary factors going into effect, I'll generate about an additional $12,000 every year in addition. So let's say by the year 2028, the city will be making approximately $100,000 more than what they currently receive from Wheatland. Entertain any questions you might have.
Is the...
Not there yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Victorin.
Director, is the length, time length of the agreement perpetual?
Correct. Until...
Doesn't expire unless one party serves notice?
Yes.
And that's 30-day notice by either party, isn't it?
I believe so. It's in there, I'm sure.
And that seems to be a standard contract, Mr. Eddington, that the city enters where they can get out of the contract with 30-day notice, as can the other party, right?
Pretty, pretty close, but this one is actually 15 days written notice, and then it terminates 45 days thereafter.
Okay.
So it's a total of 60 days, really. You look at Article 2. And B, though, says 90 days.
Which paragraph are you on?
One's termination with cause, the other one's termination without cause.
Yeah. If you look at B, so it'd be 90 days without reason, 60 with reason.
And last time this agreement with Wheatland was reached was in 2016, so this is nine years later.
Correct. That's the one we're currently operating on.
Right.
And there is a clause that does allow for any changes, amendments to it. For example, should the City of Torrington choose to, as our rates go up, increase the rates to Wheatland?
Well, that's in Article 3 with the inflation factor. Correct. Article 7 states that Torrington or Wheatland may from time to time request changes to the agreement.
But they have to agree to do the change.
Correct, yes.
And there's a built-in inflation factor of 3%?
Yes, in Article 3.
Okay. And this, if council approves this, my signing of this agreement, it will take effect July 1 of 2025.
That, I think Sylvia may have some information on that. She was contacted the City of Wheatland today.
So they only meet once a month? Their next meeting isn't until July 14th? So their council wouldn't be able to review this until July 14th?
Okay.
Likely we would have to change this to take effect August 1st.
Okay. I've talked to Jeff about it, I've talked to Ed Holly about it. I like it, okay? Ed, can you come up for a minute? Thank you.
Welcome.
I know that you were over there negotiating this. It hasn't been renegotiated for, what, 11 years? No, nine years.
Nine years.
Okay. And you talked to, gentleman's name is Dean, right?
Dean is a sanitation supervisor.
And you were also negotiating with, I forget the lady's name, she's the new treasurer over there?
Yes, and I already forgot, Tabitha. There we go, I'm sorry.
And I know 6% was agreed to... And I know 6% was agreed to between, by you...
Yep.
And by Wheatland, right? When you were started, I want to ask you this, a leading question, but when you started asking for more than that 6 cents a pound, what kind of reaction did you get?
I got the reaction of, maybe we can find another place to go with this, Casper or Cheyenne, which Casper's longer, Cheyenne is quicker, but the weather kind of prohibits, and Dean's reaction was, no, I think we can, we would rather go to Torrington and come up with a rate.
So, and they were willing to do the 6 cents a pound?
Yep, they were, I mentioned 7, I even mentioned 10 cents, and 10 cents really sent them south real quick.
And I know from talking to you and to Director of Public Works, Harkins, there's a sense in DEQ and EPA where they want to start moving to regional landfills, okay? And I know just from, you know, the congratulations that you guys got on that inspection on Friday, that is a landfill that's state-of-the-art landfill, and when that baler goes in there, it's gonna even be more state-of-the-art.
Yes.
And I think there's room out there for probably generations of trash disposal in our local landfill, right?
Yep, about four more decades where we're at.
Where we're at?
Where we're at, yeah.
But there's room to expand out there?
Yes.
And the other thing, Ed, this trash, how often does Wheatland bring it over?
Three times a week.
Three times a week.
Averages about 21 tons.
I talk to Ed, he always reiterates, this is the cleanest, easiest-to-handle trash that exists in the world of trash.
Yes, it is.
It is Wheatland household trash.
Yep.
It, they bring it over, it's not hard on that baler, it has those guys that work at the baler busy, it's a simple operation to do this, it's not hurting our equipment, it keeps our baler from being idle, and it keeps the men from being idle.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And I just personally think it's a wonderful deal that the city of Torrington has to use its landfill to take that trash, household trash, from Wheatland. I know it's all leading questions, so you agree, though, right?
I agree, it's a good deal for Torrington.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as an enterprise fund, this does add considerable amount to that sanitation budget.
Yes.
Without a whole lot of wear and tear?
Without a whole lot of wear and tear. We're doing it anyway, so...
All right, gentlemen...
Could I jump in on this?
Yes, sir, you may.
So explain that, when you say clean trash, is that because Wheatland is sort of picking out what they don't want to send us from their tipping station?
Everything that Wheatland brings goes through augers, series of augers, so it's kind of pre-ground. When it gets here, it's easy to bail, it makes a great bail, it's not, like our stuff is chunky, you have chairs, recliners, kitchen tables, this stuff is all chewed up, it's just a whole lot easier on our baler, it bags probably about 2.2 ton per, or, yeah, 1.2 ton per bail instead of less than a ton, so it's a very solid bail.
This is 1.2 tons of bail?
Yes, about what it averages.
Local trash is one ton of bail?
Less than one ton, because of so bulky and so many voids in it.
All right, any, I appreciate you coming tonight, Ed.
You're welcome.
Had a long one to sit through. All right, gentlemen, do you have any further questions for Ed Holly or for Jeff Harkins?
I just want to...
For comments?
Want to add a comment that I appreciate the inflation factor being added in.
I do, too.
I, I'm not going to bring up our debate that we had meetings ago, but I think that helps get us closer to where I think we should need to be, so I appreciate that.
Yes, I do, too, and that's a wonderful addition to that.
And they understood that, they understand that everybody has inflation, so it's not...
And we didn't have that before in the 2016 agreement.
Yeah, not as bad.
All right. All right, any, going again, gentlemen, any questions?
One other thing, on the billing, I see that we bill them monthly and they pay within 30 days, and we've never had an issue there?
No.
Good customer.
Yep, excellent.
Any further questions? All right, we are on item number nine, request council's approval for my signing the agreement with the city of Wheatland for disposal of municipal solid waste, and it will be an effective date of August 1, 2025. I would entertain a motion to that.
I would move to approve the agreement as presented?
All right, I have a motion to approve the agreement as presented, an item number nine, with the city of Wheatland for disposal of municipal solid waste. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, I'll give Councilman Warren a second on that. All right, any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, item number nine, all those in favor of approving my signing the agreement with the city of Wheatland for disposal of municipal solid waste set forth in item nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that agreement's approved, and I'll sign it. Thank you, Mr. Holly and Mr. Harkins.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, we've had quite a long agenda, I was wondering if we might have a short recess?
I do, if you want to make a motion and I got a second, I'll sure grant one.
I would, I would move to recess for a five-minute break.
Second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal, we will, all in favor of recess for five minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank, 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 Councilman Victor.
Sorry, I recessed without permission.
I don't need a motion to go back, we'll just go back, right?
Yeah.
It's like I was saying, never pass up an opportunity.
I know what, I'm okay, but I know when I'm not okay, I want to... Yeah.
Except for Matt.
Or did Matt leave?
Is Matt, are you replacing Matt, or is he coming? He's coming back. Other Matt. All right, well, we're in recess, but we'll wait till the Chief of Police returns, and then we'll come back to order. They only meet once a month, huh?
Meeting was June 9th, we missed it.
Well, we weren't sure, so you called, yeah.
I assumed we would get some weather tonight while we were here, but nothing's really happening.
Sun shining yet, or just cloudy still, but no...
More north of us.
I want, I'll take more rain.
Oh, yeah.
No tornado, hail.
At least we weren't like...
All right, we're gonna come back to order, we have all the necessary parties, we are back to order. We are on item number 10, resolution number 2025-5, amend the 2025 fiscal year budget, and I'd ask Mr. Eddington to read that resolution by title.
City of Torrington City Council, many June 17, 2025, resolution 2025-5. Whereas the general fund received unanticipated revenue, and whereas certain budgets had expenditures in excess of the budgeted amount, and whereas the Wyoming State statute prohibits any officer or employee of a municipality to make any expenditure or encumbrance in excess of the total appropriation for any department, therefore, be it resolved that the fiscal year 2025 budget of the city of Torrington be amended as follows, grand total budget adjustment $345,932.78.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eddington, and again, I would call on Clerk Treasurer Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have several budget adjustments in the general fund. As you know, this is the last meeting of the fiscal year, so this is the last opportunity we have to adjust the budget to make sure we do not go over our appropriated amount, which would be, make us non-compliant, and we would have a finding on our audit. So, we need to make sure that we stay within our budgeted amount, and so I look through the budget and try to estimate where things are going to be. I sent out an email earlier to staff, we have two more payrolls that's going to be expensed yet this year, and we also, I also have a few adjustments that I need to get in for some errors that I found that might affect their budgets, so we need to be very careful of our spending until the end of the year. So I try to estimate what we may need to finish out the year without going over. There are a few things here for grants that we've received from rec board, parks, golf and swimming pool, have three adjustments for those. We have some carryover items from fiscal year '24 with some projects that didn't quite carry over like they should have in the electric fund. I believe wholesale power will need to be increased because we had a very hot summer last summer, and I think we used more electricity than I had projected in fiscal year '25. So, if there's any questions on any of these that I have, I did make an error in the budget for emergency management, so I needed to correct that, and as I said several times, a budget is a living document, you know, you can't project everything that happens, or what expense is gonna be because of inflation or whatever else, so, but I believe that these will get us to where we need to be for our budget for fiscal year '25, and hopefully we won't go over any of these categories or any others.
All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mrs. Strecker?
I do.
Go ahead, Councilman Victor.
We're $2,000 under the actual total. I added these categories, and it comes to $347,932.78.
Okay.
Is there just something missing, or?
I don't know. I will amend that total to $347,932.78.
Good catch.
I've done it about three times, and so I don't, I've tried to figure out what it could be, but I didn't know.
It could just be an error on my part, typo.
Okay, so now, under the grand total budget, that should read $347,932.78.
Right.
Okay.
I think the categories that are listed individually are correct, so it was just the total.
Okay. All right, any further questions for Mrs. Strecker? Hearing none, we're on item number 10, resolution number 2025-5, amend the 2025 fiscal year budget, do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion from Councilman Deal to approve the resolution set forth in item 10, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victor, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. Item number 10, all those in favor of approval of resolution number 2025-5, amending the 2025 fiscal year budget, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that resolution's approved. We are moving on to item number 11, resolution number 2025-6, supporting the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the development of a joint countywide safety action plan, and Mr. Eddington, would you please read that resolution by title?
Resolution 2025-06, a resolution supporting submission of a safe streets and roads for all SS4A grant application for the development of a joint countywide safety action plan.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington, and I'd call on Chief of Police, Matt Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This kind of developed out of a conversation about increasing radar signs, we'd really like to get to a place where we have... Um, we'd really like to get to a place where we have radar signage on all of our main thoroughfares through town that provide a reminder of what our speed limits are and particularly when they change from 45 to 30, um, and from 70 to 45. We try to conduct speed enforcement on those locations, but we can't be there all the time and those signs do a really nice job of calming traffic and improving our traffic safety. Um, I was looking into the Safe Streets for All Grant under the federal DOT. Unfortunately, the price tag for all of our signs did not reach the required minimum for the grant. Um, and I touched base with Bob Taylor to see if they might have an interest of working with me in the county so that we could do kind of a countywide approach so that those radar signs, excuse me, were consistent throughout, especially Highway 26 and 85. What we learned through researching the grant was that you can't do anything without a very special plan because it's a federal grant. Um, so in order to be eligible for that Safe Streets for All funding, which really does provide some nice funding opportunities, we need to have a coordinated safety plan at the county level. Um, we've done some more work on that. Um, the, the due date is coming up on June 26th and we're working to have that ready to submit on June 20th, but the end result was an estimated $200,000 cost to produce the safety plan. That safety plan would cover the entire county. The City of Torrington would be a co-applicant, which means we would be eligible to own, um, future resources that are purchased under the grant, but that the grant would be managed and submitted for by the county. Um, the important thing that obviously hits with this topic is that there is a matching fund of 20%. Um, everybody has a really tight budget right now. Um, so the way that the resolution is written is that Gogoshin has provided a tentative commitment or a tentative interest, I guess maybe is the right way to say that, in providing the funding for the 20% matching applicant, or matching funds for the city and county and obviously for the other surrounding communities. Um, however, the City of Torrington would be able to contribute in the form of in-kind contributions. So, if there were staff time for myself, for Mr. Harkins, for Mr. Eddington, anyone else that participates and works on this grant, we could utilize that staff fund or staff time, the staff expense, um, as part of an in-kind contribution that would reduce the amount of money that would need to be paid by Gogoshin for the grant, um, local match. Um, what we're hoping to get out of this at the end is a plan that we can move forward with for future applications. Um, the advantage of this grant is that there's some pretty high dollar amounts, um, in terms of the top end. Um, so in addition to obviously the signage that we're hoping for, um, to support traffic safety, we're, I mean, there's some feasibility here that we could be looking at perhaps, um, the traffic signal that we so desperately need down at 85 and, uh, the overpass. Um, we might be able to look at, um, certainly some of the county intersections, I mean, not that we'd be looking at them, but, um, hopefully, everybody in the community would benefit by also addressing some of the safety issues out in the county. Excuse me, my voice is going away for some reason. Um, there's a lot to it, but I think that's probably a summary of the things that will stand out for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I could. Obviously, Mr. Harkins is here. Um, he and I have talked about this and he also could provide valuable insight if that's beneficial as well.
Go ahead, Councilman Victor.
Just understanding the roles of the entities. So, you have the, the county governing body and the city governing body as the joint bodies that want to apply for the funding. YDOT is helping us in data and that sort of realm? Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, um, we are utilizing YDOT data. Um, we received a letter of support, a very strong letter of support from Colonel Cameron with the Highway Patrol, um, for the project. YDOT has to be a partner in it, but they're not really a direct partner from the standpoint of receiving funds or being able to own the, um, resources that are obtained through the grant. So, I, I'm not sure if that thoroughly answers your question, but, um, YDOT has to be a partner because they're the owner and maintainer of many of the roads that are out there, um, that, or the, many of the problems that we'll be trying to address. Um, but that would be through a collaborative partnership and funding provided from DOT.
And then Gogoshin is the financial partner, if you will, that's helping make, let us realize this.
Yep, they're, they're generously contributing towards that local match or, I'm sorry, they're, that's the direction that's going right now. And obviously, we have a disclaimer in there that if that does not occur, we wouldn't, um, submit on the grant because nobody has the money right now.
So, it's conditional, the resolution?
It is a conditional, conditional resolution.
Do you know if, in this program, does the federal government allow for the, these partners to, going back to your, um, discussion on in-kind match? Does the, does, does, does the federal DOT allow for those entities to provide, as a form of in-kind match, the ability to install this equipment?
I think I, I would, I wish to make sure I'm hedging, um, my answer with, uh, the fact that I am not an expert on this grant. Um, but as it has been discussed in our meetings, I think that's a very real possibility. Director Harkins might have insight on that, do you, sir?
Uh, no, I'm not really all that familiar with the grant itself.
Uh, it, it's very broad. Um, the, the whole grant is broad. I, I mean, it's not even exactly specific on what you can utilize it for, it's really anything related to improving traffic safety. Um, and I, I can't give you a, a solid hard answer on whether or not the installation would be usable in years, um, in the future. I mean, we wouldn't be eligible to apply for anything until the next fiscal year anyways because we have to get our safety plan, um, completed first. Um, so that would be subject to a future grant application. Um, but with what I know right now, I think that's certainly a possibility that could be beneficial.
And there's a deadline, right?
There's a deadline for this submission and the reason we're pushing so hard for that is because the requirement of the safety plan means that we're a year out on, on getting anything palatable or anything tangible, I guess would be the correct way of saying that, um, that actually moves us forward on this, on the safety issue. So, before we can actually get any equipment, make any recommendations, make any, um, project, um, applications, we've got to get the safety plan in, in play and we're trying to get that submitted, um, by June 20th for the 26th deadline. I'm sorry, I, I apologize, I meant to check and see if the, um, County Commission had approved this today. Um, I, I don't know if that took place, but I, I know that they were, um, discussing their support on that and that Bob Taylor had been having a lot of conversations, as had the county grant writer and the, uh, county road and bridge.
And, and I like the idea because as we talked about at a staff meeting, there's some, uh, issues in this county. Uh, I know west of town by Cool Customs. There, there's been a lot of wrecks there. Silver tips a dangerous spot. Um, those S-curves east of La Grange are, I know they are. They're constantly rebuilding the fence out of there for, if you don't have a rollover, they just tear through bar, barbed wire fence. Um, and I think that curve in Lingle, that 90-degree curve going west. Um, so there's a lot of, and I know county's interested in addressing some of these things and the city too, as you said, the intersection 85 and the overpass.
I really, I agree with all of those things and I really like the notion of having a collaborative plan. I, I mean, if you, I'm not speaking out of anyone, but everybody kind of has their own signage ideas right now. Everybody kind of has their own way that things are marked. And if we had that opportunity to have some of that really consistent signage, um, those radar signs are fantastic for slowing people down and if that were predictable and consistent throughout the county, I think that's a great way to go and it also gives us at least a hope for access to funding to address some of the bigger issues that we need to address. Um, and certainly, there's no guarantees, but this at least is a significant step in the right direction. And I, I also should say that, um, Ms. Hannah Fulmer, I believe is her last name, the county grant manager, has just done a fantastic job at putting this together and helping everybody make it, uh, work and, uh, also Bob Taylor's done a ton of work on this to make it happen, so I really appreciate their help.
And essentially, it's no risk to us. If Gogoshin can't come through, then deal's off, right?
Yeah, we've, I tried to be pretty specific about that. Um, and also with Lynette's feedback, we wanted to, I mean, she had the $20,000 Gogoshin contribution already in the budget for this year. Um, so I, I tried to be as specific as I could about that in the resolution that that was a contingency, that it's not gonna diminish the $20,000 that Lynette already has budgeted and that that has to happen in order for us to be a co-sponsor of the grant.
They have indicated a willingness in concept?
Yes. We received a letter of support from them and I think they're working on kind of a final review and plan. Mr. Harkins can provide some insight on that as well, I think.
Yeah, this was all discussed at the last Economic Development Gogoshin Board meeting and the board was in favor of supporting
And I, I like that part about if you spend some time working on this, are you Chief Johnson, Jeff Harkins spent some time, are you Chief Johnson? You guys can keep track of your time and that's in-kind and that would reduce the amount that Gogoshin would have to pay, right? That would be counted towards that, so.
And frankly, working together on an issue that affects everybody is a great way to go.
All right. Any further questions, gentlemen? All right, we are on item number 11, resolution number 2025-6 regarding the grant application, uh, for development of a joint countywide safety action plan. Um, do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
I would move to approve resolution 2025-6.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Victor in item number 11 to approve resolution number 2025-6. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor in item number 11, uh, to approve resolution number 2025-6, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that resolution in item 11 is approved. We are now on item number 12, policy handbook amendments, uh, related to equipment rental or loan policy definitions, unauthorized absence, compensation and performance evaluation. And I'd call on Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as we discussed in our, uh, budget work sessions, we do have some policies for you to consider tonight for some changes. The equipment rental and loan policy, we based, the Wage Committee just reviewed this policy and made a minor change to limit the rental of equipment to employees and other governmental agencies. Um, the definition policy, um, the committee reviewed the policy and changed the definition for seasonal employee. Um, the Wage Committee numbers and, um, immediate family. Um, absent without leave, the Wage Committee recommends changing the title of this policy to unauthorized absence. And then the last one is the compensation and performance evaluation policy. This one had the most significant changes. Um, the, the Wage Committee considered, um, um, changing this and cutting the merit increases in half. For budgetary purposes and for sustainability mainly. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have on those, those policies that were previously discussed.
Thank you, Mrs. Strecker, and first of all, I want to thank Councilman Deal for being Chairman of the Wage Committee. It's, it's a lot of work and it's important work, so thank you for your chairmanship on that committee.
And while you're reading through them and looking at the changes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank the staff members who are on that committee, they do a wonderful job.
And I can't remember where this came up. I don't know if it was in the Wage Committee meeting or not, on that last one on performance pay. When you first look at that, it's kind of hard to read, so kind of ignore the underlined part and the, you look like extraordinary is 4%.
I tried to bold it a little more, if you can see, I, I double.
Right.
If it's underlined, that's, that's
That's the, that's the
Half percent.
That's correct.
Underline represents that, yep. Page five of that. And part of the reason for the change in performance pay is budgetary issues this year, plus over time, you get into almost a geometrical progression that's unsustainable over time without
Yeah.
dealing with that issue, right?
Right, and we looked at, you know, the personnel costs compounding the past four or five years and it, it was on a trajectory that we probably couldn't sustain. Um, a lot of, a lot of the positions are reading, reaching the top of their scales. Um, we're gonna see more of that. But this will hopefully settle that down and, and keep everybody within their scales.
And, and I know from attending those meetings that there was, uh, substantial, uh, deep discussion on, you know, merit pay and COLA, you know, and the advantages and disadvantages to one over the other. And the COLA this year is 2%, which inflation is 4.5%, I think you told me, uh, in this area. So, that benefits all city employees that are all hit with inflation, as is everybody. Um, and I know there was a lot of discussion on that being probably on balance, they're both important, but on balance, the COLA was important. And I do want to say this again, just for Council's benefit. I attend most of, of Wage Committee meetings. Those are very important meetings. I can attest that Chairman Deal runs that well. Um, staff is there, uh, people from all the departments. They are good people on that committee. They take it seriously. Um, they don't act like a union, so to speak. They understand that the city, they're loyal to the city. They see good arguments, they consider good arguments and that just is a very important and I think well-functioning committee.
It's come a long way over the years.
That's, that's what I hear, so. So, I guess my larger point is don't think that these aren't well-discussed and deeply thought through before they're presented to Council.
I'm not hearing any questions, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve the policy changes and the compensation and performance evaluation as recommended by the Wage Committee.
All right, uh, we're on item number 12. I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the policy handbook amendments A, B, C, and D. approve the Policy Handbook Amendments, A, B, C, and D, as set forth in item twelve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Item number twelve, all those in favor of approval of the Policy Handbook Amendments as set forth in item twelve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those Policy Handbook Amendments are approved. On to item number thirteen on tonight's agenda, approval of the bills from June fourth, 2025 to June seventeenth, 2025. And I'd call on Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tashed to your agenda was a list of bills for your consideration. And then also, I handed out an additional set tonight. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. Hopefully, you all got the response to Dennis, Councilman Dennis Kelly's question.
Which was adequately answered.
I saw a vendor here. Okay, it's the second set. It's Column Software PVC. I believe it's, account code is for the airport, and it looks like it's legal notices.
That's the Casper Star Tribune's new automated company that does their publishing.
Okay. I noticed there's a bill to Morehouse, Inc., still second page, or second set, page five. It's for rebuild of the dugout frame from wind damage. Is that at a ball field?
Now, we have to stand the cost of that because it's not covered by property insurance, right?
Yeah, the wind and hail deductible is, is it two percent? And then it has an aggregate amount of $100,000, I believe. So we have to have $100,000 in damage before we can...
That's the only substantial damage we had at the city, though, right?
Well, I think they had a lot of trees damaged.
Well, other than the trees out at the golf course, but building-wise?
I believe that's correct, Mayor.
A tree at the cemetery.
Yeah.
The public really stepped up and helped out with the golf course.
Yes, and thanks to all of them. I know they really did.
I have no other questions to you. I would move to approve the bills as presented.
All right, item number thirteen. I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the bills as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number thirteen, all those in favor of approval of the bills as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the bills in item thirteen are approved. We are down in item number fourteen, public comment. And I know Fire Chief Luis Correa is here. And Dennis Estes did a wonderful job reporting on the events at the fire convention. So if you want, you may do that, or just give us a fire report or whatever you choose, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As far as the fire report, we've been fairly slow. With the amount of rain that we've gotten, it's kept things, things wet, but it's also made things grow very, very tall. We were out at about the meter department today, and I noticed quite a few properties with overgrown weeds. And once that stuff dries out, it potentially could be a busy time of the year for us. As far as the fire reports, we had, I think, two motor vehicle accidents that we assisted in and carbon monoxide, or dioxide check, or monoxide.
Monoxide.
Carbon monoxide, yes, sorry. But yeah, Dennis did a great job with reporting on convention. Like he said, both of our teams did really well. It was a great time. I think everybody that was involved had a good time with it, and it's done and over with. It was a lot of work, a lot of work on a lot of people's parts. I would like to thank the Department of Corrections for their, the use of their honor guard for presenting of the colors, and Danielle Eichenberger, who sang the National Anthem. Amazing.
She's our assistant pool manager.
Yeah, she did. Amazing job by both of them. Again, on behalf of the Fire Department, I'd like to thank those guys, as well as everyone else who pitched in and donated. And it was quite the accomplishment to pull off that feat of that, a feat of that magnitude.
Well, I was very pleased. I know Dennis reported at staff meeting this morning that he was well pleased with that convention, and it went well and brought a lot of people to town. And you guys got through that. You did well as departments, rural and city, and, you know, good, all good, right?
Yeah, we did. One other thing I'd like to thank Dave Dent with facilitating the golf tournament and all those that donated the use of their golf cart. We ended up having... Oh, wow. Well, I think the golf course has 20 carts that we used, and then another 12 were donated by the, by members, various members of the community for us to be able to have golf carts for everyone. So it was a fairly, fairly good tournament. And again, we had Torrington teams take first and second place on that, so...
Good. You guys should be proud.
We are. I'm very proud of the guys and all the things that they do. And it's nice to, nice to have some trophies to show off for their hard work.
That means something, doesn't it? Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm curious, I got to, I was out of town this weekend, so I didn't get to partake in witnessing the competition. But I did get to see that the teams came to the hall, and you must have had a gathering there.
Yeah, so the first night, registration was at the fire hall. We'd do a hospitality thing. And then the second night with the, with the alligator and the crawfish boil. We got concerned with the weather forecast, so that was moved to the fire station. And I want to say they said about 130 people were fed that night. It was again...
Where did the crawdads and the alligator come from?
Um, Gator Cater is the name of the company. I cannot remember his last name, but Tim, I believe he also is the owner and operator of one of the tree removal services, but...
He's local guy.
Yeah, he's local. He had done an event at the country club, and a couple of our members were able to do that. And they, it was, it was good food. He does a really good job. I do, I do recommend that if you're into alligator.
Did our, our, this is gonna, this is me trying to see if we have bragging rights, but...
Go ahead.
Did the, did our hall and our equipment and our golf course, did it produce some envy amongst the visiting teams?
Yeah, yeah. You know, we spent a lot of time and efforts getting, getting the station cleaned up. The south hall, we spent quite a bit of money getting that up to, up to par, as Dennis had said. I think 2007 was the last time we had hosted a convention. So we've, we've practiced, but you know, when you're practicing on that stuff, you let a few things slide that you wouldn't otherwise when that many people are, got their eyes on it. And yeah, you know, the golf course always is a, it's always in great shape. Of course, there's nothing that they could do, but the cotton was in full force. So, but yeah, everybody was impressed with, with our facility and the golf course, the drill hall, or the drill field. And we definitely utilized the campgrounds down there. They were pleased to have a spot to park campers. And we had quite a few people that you were able to get out of the heat, so...
All right. Well done. Appreciate it, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Matt Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know you all know this, but the budget is an incredibly painful undertaking for Mrs. Strecker. It's pretty common to be leaving the office here at 6:30 or 7:00 at night and still see her car being the only one sitting in the parking lot. And she works incredibly hard to make sure that our ship floats. And a group of us kicked in a couple bucks to get her some flowers for the celebration of the budget passing. She might need a sherpa to get them back to her office, but we just wanted to say thank you to Lynette.
Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you.
And thank you for, for me, and I'll let these gentlemen speak, but thank you, Lynette, for all your hard work and herding the cats. So appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. I can't do it all without, without you guys.
All right, we are in public comment time. Gentlemen, do you have any comments? All right, we don't see any public comment out there. We have completed this agenda for this evening. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.